Thank you, Councilwoman Stark. And now I'd like to call to order the September 18th, 2019, meeting of the Park Central Community Facilities District. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Board member Conlin? Board member DeCecio? Board member Garcia? Board member Gervais?
Here.
Board member Guardado?
Here.
Board member Nowakowski? Board member Pastor?
Here.
Board member Stark?
Here.
Board member Williams?
Here.
Vice Chair Waring? Chairwoman Gallego?
Here. Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the August 28th, 2019, meeting.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. We will now conduct a public hearing on the proposed district budget for fiscal year 2019 through 2020 and the proposed five-year financial plan for the district. Do we have any cards from members of the public? We do not have any cards from the members of the public. We will open the hearing, and I would entertain a motion on the adoption of Resolution PC 06.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second from Councilwoman Williams.
I'll second that motion.
Excellent. It was an excellent motion. Any discussion? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gervais?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring? Gallego?
Yes. Motion passes 11 to 0. Unfortunately, we have to let our board members go, but that was some nice unanimity. We'd love to see more often. Thank you both for your service on the board. We have adopted the budget. With that, I will adjourn the meeting of the Community Facilities District Board and call to order the City Council's formal meeting of September 18th. Will the city clerk please call the roll for the formal meeting?
Councilman DeCecio?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilwoman Guardado?
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor? Councilwoman Stark? Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring? Mayor Gallego?
Here. We have an interpreter, Mario Barajas, who is with us here today. Would you please introduce yourself?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mario Barajas. I'm going to be making a brief announcement in Spanish for the Spanish speakers. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Mario Barajas, y voy a estar sirviendo como el intérprete de esta tarde. Si acaso alguien necesitara el servicio de intérprete, podrá acudir a cualquier miembro de la ciudad personal atrás para que les provean los aparatos para escuchar la interpretación. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mario. Would the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinances and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordnances number G6617, S46004 through 46046, and resolutions 21779 through 21782.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Williams, have you had a chance to review the formal meeting minutes from February 6th?
I have a move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We next move to the boards and commissions appointments for the city of Phoenix. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve mayor and city council board and commission nominations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We do have members of the public here to be sworn in. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations and thank you for your service. The Phoenix City Council provides advice to the State Liquor Board on liquor license applications. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on the liquor license portion of our agenda?
Move to approve items 3 through 22.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business, and planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
I do. I move to approve items 23 through 81, accepting items 35, 39, 42, 63, 64, and 72. And item 29 is requested to be continued to October 2nd, 2019.
Wonderful. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor? Stark? Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes. Passes 9-0. We next move to item 35, which is acquisition of property by the airport. I was hoping to, if we'd have someone from the airport up for a quick question.
I move to approve item 35.
Second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. A few months ago, the city council approved a plan and an update for our property management near the airport, and we have committed to the neighbors that the city will do our best to be a good neighbor, and particularly vacant land near people's businesses and homes. We were wondering if we could get an update as we move forward with this item on that management of the land.
Mayor, members of the council, we are working towards that management update now, but we do have an update on a number of properties that we will be taking out for request for proposal in very short order. So there are properties that are along Jefferson at 15th Street that are prime properties in an opportunity zone that are mixed-use development workforce housing opportunities. We've been meeting with Pilgrim's Rest on those properties, and we will have those out for request for proposal here this fall. So we're working towards those. There are additional properties that are located at 20th Street and Jefferson. Although they're not in the aviation ownership, they're remnants of transit properties that are there. We're going to take that out as a companion piece as well to get that area activated around the business as mixed-use workforce housing opportunities between the rails, between Jefferson and Washington. On the south side of I-17, where the community has been clear they are comfortable with employment and industrial uses, we are negotiating currently with an employment user in that area that would be able to expand some light industrial employment jobs in that area. We are working on a number of other. I just haven't formalized all of the additional information to bring forward to you, but we'd certainly be happy to do that in the very near future. Those are the properties that we have that'll be ready to move forward in certainly within the next few weeks.
Wonderful. Thank you. We've committed to the neighbors.
Yes, ma'am.
We want to activate those properties, and if we can do it while furthering the city's goals of adding affordable housing and workforce housing, that is great news. Any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Garcia?
No questions, just again echoing the community wanting that the area to be rebuilt, and thankful. Got an opportunity to speak some of the FAA folks this last week in DC and thanked them for allowing that to continue to grow. And so, thank you all, and hopefully we get it moving.
Wonderful. Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to meet with the FAA. We appreciate the update. With that, we'll move to roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor? Stark? Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes. Passes 9-0. Thank you for the update. We next move to item 39. We have a card from one resident who is marked as neutral, Charles Norris. Yes, if you could come to the podium, you have up to two minutes to testify on the item. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the time to respond to this item. Fortunately, Councilwoman Pastor's office gave me some answers, so my comments will be even shorter. The training that has been proposed for the 218,500 for three new pilots and the existing pilot on the Pilatus PC-12 comes to $129,500. The request is for $200,018.5. So my comment to the council is, why the extra 68%? So you should consider that. The second thing that struck me as I did this is the Pilatus PC-12 is, in fact, one of the best aircraft of its type in the world. It has very low operating costs, so, you know, I commend the city for having that aircraft. The chances that that aircraft is used 3,000 out of 8,000 hours a year that the police department flies is probably low. My suggestion is that the city consider approaching the state, who two years ago combined ADOT and the AZDPS unit, and they have a few similar-type aircraft, but say, hey, we've got an aircraft that can do this job better and cheaper, and we're willing to share it with you and save money for the taxpayers of Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeCecio.
Mayor, I'd just like to have someone respond back to the 68% increase. Thank you for that. None of us would have caught it, so thank you for sharing that information. And then, the ability to share, sounds intriguing at the very least. We always talk about doing things like that.
Mayor Gallego, Councilman DeCecio. With me, I have Commander Sean Kennedy, who's the commander over our tactical support bureau, and Lieutenant Doug Offerbeck, who is lieutenant over our air support unit. Let me address the issue about the payment authority that we're seeking. We are good stewards of the tax dollar. We only use that amount that we believe we will need. That's why we're seeking more in the event that we were to expand the air support unit over our current staffing levels today. We're experiencing tremendous transition in our air support unit, but we don't believe we're going to need all of that payment authority. We just don't want to come back and ask for more in the event that we were to expand the unit. With regard to the specific questions, I'll defer to my right.
But Mayor, in the meantime, while they're doing that, could I ask, though, that for a more thorough accounting of that then, too? So the gentleman had mentioned that it would take three individuals to be able to be trained at 129,000 approximately, and whatever that number is. So if we're authorizing for more, we'd like to know what those are going to be used for at a later date, and I'd like you to make sure that you, that as a city, because we want as citizens to, and encourage them to bring up these kinds of things that sometimes we don't catch, to also communicate with this gentleman if you could leave your name and number so that at least he's aware of what's going on, as well as us. Go ahead.
Mayor Gallego, Councilman DeCecio, the contract for $218,000 is over a five-year period. We don't anticipate using it, like the chief said, but we want to make sure we have enough in there so we don't have to come back. I'm in, upon approval here, what I'm requesting will be funds of $45,000 to train four people by next July. The $128,000, I'm not sure where that came from. The class that I need to send them to runs about $10,000 for three of them, and about $6,000 for the one for recurrent training on that simulator in Orlando.
Councilwoman Williams?
The last time I was at Deer Valley, and I believe you told me that you work with other agencies, that has ability to fly at 10,000 feet, you record what's criminal activity that's going on below, and you work closely with DEA, I believe, the state, and some other agency. Is that still the case?
Mayor Gallego and Councilwoman Williams, that is correct. We work with multiple agencies in assist. Often, we use our aircraft because of its capabilities and the availability of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call. I'm sorry, we do not have a motion on the floor.
Move. Item 39.
Vice Mayor, motion, and we have a second from Councilwoman Williams and Pastor. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes. Passes 9-0. We next move to item 42, which is apprenticeship agreements with the state of Arizona. We have one card from Jennifer Grundal looking to testify with our Launa.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jennifer Grundal. I work for the Laborers International Union of Locals of America, Local 777. I cannot get by with one sentence without messing up in this chamber. I did write a short speech today. I'm asking that you vote in support in favor of item 42. Over the past few years, since 2016, virtually everyone in front of me has helped us work on joint labor management apprenticeship programs. We have worked together to create innovative programs for solid waste equipment operators, gardeners, and street maintenance workers. It began in 2016 when this late San Francisco mayor, Ed Lee, visited the city of Phoenix with then-mayor Greg Stanton, now congressman, and we discussed the asset of having an apprenticeship program. We create jobs. We reach out to at-risk youth, to women in non-traditional work, like our SUIOs, sanitation drivers. We reach out to vets. In this current class in our SUIO program, we have 50% women, one of which testified. Last week, she gave a statement at the subcommittee, and she was living in a van when she applied for that program, with her kids. In a van with her kids, she applied for the program. We didn't know that when she applied. We had no idea. We had selected her as one of the apprentices in the program. She has a home now, with and for her children. We're actually literally changing lives of people that live in Phoenix with these programs. We're giving them sustainable work. They have benefits. They have retirement security. They have these things because of what we've done together. And with our SUIO Solid Waste Equipment Operator Program, it's national attention. It proves that if we come together and we try to change the world, we really can. We can give people an opportunity to have a better life. We did that, all of us together, even you, Sal. All of us. We all did that. We got together. We may disagree at times, but in the end, we have one concern: as the city of Phoenix and the people that live here in our community. So I am asking today that you support item number 42. I think I was almost on topic today, and that will be it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Guardado?
Yes, I am extremely honored to be voting in support of this item today. I'd like to take a minute to thank Jennifer and Launa for creating these type of programs that definitely go aligned with a lot of my core values, which is making sure that people have good jobs, making sure that one job should be enough for people to live in the city of Phoenix, and making sure that people are good citizens. If you have a good job, if you have good benefits, you're going to be a good citizen, you're going to be a great citizen, not just a good citizen, but a great citizen. And for me, that's something that's incredibly important. We have a huge issue right now in the city, people experiencing homelessness. And hearing Sheila's story last week, like, really moved me to continue to believe that if people have dignity and respect on the job, they have a good-paying job, they're going to be able to pay their bills. There's at least a quarter or more of that of people in my district, in District 5, that are one paycheck away from being homeless. And I take that really to heart when I sit here and say, having a good job, having a good wage, being able to have a pension is the only way to go if we are truly going to deal with the homeless issues that we have going on in our city right now. So I'm very happy that we have this program going. I hope to see it expanding, and expanding it to other places in the city of Phoenix. I look forward to seeing these workers and seeing the pride that they work with day in and day out. So once again, Jennifer, thank you. Thank you so much to Launa, to Sheila, for sharing her story last week, that I know that it's not easy. And I look forward to seeing what the apprenticeship program is actually going to do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent remarks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Pastor?
I just really appreciate the partnership and that we were able to see the partnership and bring it together and bring it full circle. I happened to be part of it at the very beginning, and now to reach this point, it's exciting to see. I'm highly encouraging that we continue to expand, and as we look at a succession plan, what areas do we need to expand in, and how do we go about doing it? So really appreciate everybody and their efforts of making things happen in the city, but also benefiting, in many ways, our employees and benefiting, but also the community benefiting. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman DeCecio.
One, I want to thank Jennifer right off the bat. Are you still here, Jennifer?
Yes.
Hi. We've always had a good working relationship, but one of the things about your labor organization is that you've always been positive. You've always been finding ways to make the city of Phoenix better. And there's an incredible amount of admiration for you and the work that you've done there with your labor group. I also want to thank Mrs. Guardado, because, I don't know if you're completely aware, but she helped drive and make sure, and I think it was unanimous vote, that we all voted to increase the wage here to $15, the minimum wage now, and I think it's to Betty and her credit, to convince all of us that that was the right thing to do, and she did that. And the work that you have all done on this, and Betty and Jennifer, the work that you guys have done on this is outstanding, and thank you for this. It's what, these are the things that the public needs to be aware of. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. I also am excited that we are investing in our city employees. We've done great partnerships with apprenticeship programs through our Workforce Board and private-sector apprenticeships, and now the city will get to benefit at an even higher level from apprentices. Appreciate our Human Resources Department stepping up and working with the laborers to bring this program forward. It's exciting that we are investing in our employees. It also gets me mom points because the solid waste equipment operators still remain my son's favorite city employees. We look forward to Garbage Day at the Gallego house. So thank you for investing in the people who keep our city looking good and in good shape. Any additional comments from council members? Roll call. I'm sorry, we need a motion.
A motion.
Motion from Councilwoman Williams, second from Councilman Nowakowski. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes. Passes 9-0. Congratulations. We next move to item number 63, which is an item related to construction at the Cesar Chavez Community Center. This is an exciting one for District 7 and 8, as well as our entire city, moving forward with a great space for our young people, for older adults. It is a space that will have some of the latest for adaptive recreation as well, so thank you to the community leaders who worked hard and made sure that the city leads in that particular area. Do you have any comments from Councilman Nowakowski?
Absolutely. Mayor, I want to thank you for your leadership in making this all happen, also the council member Felicita Mendoza that worked really hard to make this all still happen, and all those individuals that went to all those budget hearings for the last 10 years or so asking for a community center out there in the Levine area. Thank you all for your patience and for your advocacy, and making sure that all communities have a community center that we can call home. So thank you once again.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. And I want to also thank our Parks Department, who worked hard to make sure that this was a center that met the community's needs, that took advantage of the natural beauty in the area, including views of the mountains. So thank you to our employees who worked hard with the community leaders who stepped up to design the project. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes. Passes 9-0. We next move to item 64, which is related to the light rail, and another exciting motion where we move forward with light rail extensions, including South Central as a result of the last election. Do any council members?
I will make the motion to approve because it also includes the Metro Center.
Second.
Metro Center and Capital 10 I West.
Yes.
This is one of the key motions to creating a light rail system where we're moving forward with the extensions in multiple different directions. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark? Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Gallego?
Yes. Passes 7 to 2.
Come on, Waring.
Sorry.
He was on a roll. We next move to item 72. We have two individuals here to testify, as well as several others here in support. Jim Smith, if you could come to the podium for your testimony.
My name's Jim Smith. I have lived in the neighborhood that we're seeking this irrigation district for for about 10 years. One of the main reasons that I moved into the neighborhood was for the benefit that flood irrigation provides us all. I realize that it's a unique thing to certain parts of Phoenix, and I have a special appreciation for it and the fact that I'm a landscape architect, so I understand the vegetation, the things that we do, and can grow, and our flood irrigation neighborhood is special. And through the years, we've had lots of problems with maintenance over it, and to be able to have a constant income source to help address these issues would be a great benefit to the neighborhood. It's been hit and miss this year. We've missed it several times, and it's been unfortunate. So I'm here to support the irrigation district. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for your testimony. Shelby Cuevas is here in support of the irrigation district.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for having us today. Like Mr. Smith before me, I am here to urge your support of the formation of the Ocotillo Estates Irrigation Water Delivery District. so that our kids with special needs are going to be serviced. And I was happy to hear we're going to have something as simple as a changing table. You all may understand, but that's a huge barrier for us parents with larger kids. And also for a sensory room in the center as well. That'll be an excellent opportunity for our kids to participate. Always looking ahead, because I used to be a Parks and Rec person, we definitely are going to need a workforce development component to this. I know there's workforce development funding out there because one-third of individuals, 16 to 24, high school not a work, are special needs individuals. So I know Tim Valencia, I don't know if he's here or not, I know that he and Councilman Pastor were at one time leading the initiative here at the city of Phoenix. I don't know if that's still in place, but keep in mind, I'll be knocking on some doors now to see if we can get some funding out there that's already in place to serve these kids. Last, Mayor, I want to tell you how much I appreciate working with Sapan. I probably chopped his name up, but the thing that very impressed me about him is I've called him four times, he's answered, answered on the first ring. I'm five times, four times he's answered. The fifth time he called me back within the hour. Every time I email the guy, he emails back within 30 minutes to an hour. That's outstanding customer service. That's been coming out of the mayor's office. Hopefully that's exemplary service that bleeds out the rest of council districts. Thank you very much. That's one fine young man you have working for you. Thank you all very much again. I very much look forward to seeing what you can do for us out in Levine. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve will be followed by John Jackmart.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. Just a little food for thought. First of all, a little trivia question. My friends and colleagues in the area know me as kind of a Phoenix history guy. Think for a second, these names and what do they all have in common? Darryl Dupe, MP Griffin, John Moore, Dwight Hurd, The Arizona Republic, Mayor John Driggs, American Express Corporation, Bashes Food Stores, the Phoenix Suns, this mayor and this city council. They all have something in common and what that is, is the date of October 26th. Now I'll tell you why. The first three gentlemen, Darryl Dupe, MP Griffin and John Moore, were made up a three-person committee that on October 26, 1870 officially confirmed the town site of Phoenix, Arizona, from Harrison to Van Buren, from Seventh Avenue to Seventh Street on October 26, 1870. On October 26, 1920, Dwight Hurd and The Arizona Republic officially celebrated that 50th anniversary of Phoenix being founded as a town and continued for several years to honor the pioneers of Phoenix and Arizona. In 1970, Mayor John Driggs commissioned a book celebrating the 100th anniversary of the city of Phoenix and another book came out by Mr. and Mrs. Herb McLaughlin celebrating the 100th anniversary as well. Now what this mayor and this city council has an opportunity to do next year, October 26 of 2020, you have an opportunity to follow in that tradition by putting together a celebration of the 150th anniversary. And I strongly urge you to do that, give our children and our grandchildren, I won't be here probably to reap the benefits of it, but our children, our grandchildren, the opportunity to look back 50 years in the future and say that this mayor and this city council and this city did as good, if not a better job than Dwight Hurd and Darryl Dupe and the early pioneers did in celebrating our wonderful city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. John will be followed by Barbara Work.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Williams.
I think you just presented an excellent idea and opportunity to get all the people who have moved here to celebrate our 150th birthday. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Mayor Gallego, members of the city council, I would like to invite you Friday at 6 o'clock to 119 South 11th Avenue, to the 119 Gallery, to celebrate the life of David Bessent, who was killed in October of last year while working home. This celebration will include his artwork, his life. Please come. Thank you.
Yes, please do come. You should all come and see all the work my son did. He loved this community. He spent the second half of his life being here and he really, really, really was important to an awful lot of people and I had no idea until I got here after his passing. So please do come. It means a lot. Thank you all very much, all of you. Come.
I was living in downtown Phoenix in the early eighties when they first posted the Arts District, Phoenix Arts District sign at the Seventh Street exit from 101. And I remember at the time thinking, well, we've got this museum that's been there a long time, the Hurd Museum, they're delightful features of a city, but at that time, it was pretty sparse as an arts district. And the city of Phoenix began to put out calls for artists to come and participate and create a vibrant arts community. David Bessent answered that call. He was a friend of mine, he was a student, and he spent over 10 years in the downtown area, actually, I think it was closer to 20, in on the Central Avenue area, he was in service to designers, artists, business people as a graphic illustrator and designer. But he really began to coalesce the arts community on Roosevelt Row with the creation of live drawing and painting events. And he really had developed great skills and quite a following. This is someone who really put himself on the line by coming and living in the downtown area and participating with everything he had. He was in public all the time. So I'd like to reiterate and extend an invitation to you, and I wasn't expecting to come to the city council chamber today, but I'm fortunate that I know someone who's been here many times, John Jackmart, and I'd like to offer this to the clerk and these invitations. This is the first draft of the exhibition catalog. There, that's what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, you are clerk?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for joining us. Some great ideas and invitations today. We are adjourned.